Okay. Welcome to our live stream this evening. I apologize for the slightly late start. We had some trouble getting everything set up, but we are here now. So we from the Kirkwood Public Library would like to welcome all of our viewers to this 2020 Kirkwood City Council candidate forum. It's being hosted by the library in cooperation with Fifty Trees and our moderators for this evening are from the League of Women Voters. So although we're unable to gather in person for this event, we're very excited that we can bring you this virtual forum. So that we can still come together as a community and prepare for the elections on June 2nd. Unfortunately, with this online format, we're unable to take live comments or questions from our viewers. However, we're going to do our best to cover all of the discussion topics submitted in advance by our community members. So after this live event, a recording will be available on our YouTube page with closed captioning. And it will also be shared with the city of Kirkwood and emailed to everyone who filled out our form to request the link. So without further ado, I will turn it over to our moderator, Sarah Rice.
Thank you, and greetings and thank you to all of you for being here this evening for the forum for the Kirkwood City Council. We'd like to thank the Kirkwood Public Library for sponsoring this event. And Amanda Berberich for making all the arrangements. My name is Sarah Rice and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Metro St. Louis. And I will be moderating this forum. The other league volunteer is Barbara Harris. She is our timekeeper. These are the rules for the forum which all candidates have received and by which they have all agreed to abide. Candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement. Have one minute to answer each question. Have the right to speak to all questions asked. Have two minutes for a closing statement. And they'll talk about what they believe, think, or feel in regard to the question posed to them. The candidate's job is to tell what they believe and why they deserve your vote. Thank you to those of you who submitted questions ahead of this session. I will be using those questions to guide the forum this evening. Questions related to the same topic have been grouped together. We only have an hour and a half, so we did have to group quite a few together. It's your job as the audience to listen carefully and decide which candidate you are going to support. This is the forum to allow the candidates to present their positions on issues. Which are important to you in just one minute. The timekeeper will time all opening and closing statements, allowing two minutes. Time all responses to questions, allowing one minute. Indicate 30 seconds. By showing the yellow sign. And indicate time expired by showing the red sign. It's my job to be the moderator. I will explain this procedure. Introduce the candidates in just a moment. Read to the candidates the questions. Retain the option to combine questions. And ensure that each candidate has an equal opportunity to answer the questions. And of course, enforce the ground rules. This forum will last approximately 1.5 hours. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization. Which does not support or oppose candidates or parties. But we do take positions on issues which have been studied. I want to remind everyone that the purpose of the forum is to learn where each candidate stands on the issues presented in your questions. So that you'll be an educated voter. And now the candidates for Kirkwood City Council in ballot order. Candidate Joseph Fuch, and if you'd wave when I call your name. Ellen Edmund. Maggie Dewey. Bob Sears. Liz Gibbons. And Sandy Washington. For opening statements, we start with candidate Joseph Fuch. And then candidate Sandy Washington will lead off the closing statements. Each candidate, now you will have two minutes for your opening statement. And candidate Fuch, you may begin. Let's be sure you're.
Good evening, Kirk, my fellow Kirkwood citizens. My name is Joe Vogelfang Fuch. I'm a resident here in Kirkwood naturally. I've been in retail, I was in retail grocery industry for about 40 years. My family established Kirkwood residency in 1870. My goal is to create opportunities of progress my family received to all Kirkwood citizens. If elected, I hope to achieve growth in the following areas. Number one, safe streets and sidewalks. Number two, economically accessible housing. Number three, economic development. Number four, reduce Kirkwood City's carbon footprint. Number five, which is quite a bit on our news today, the way we're living, is a pandemic plan. You must learn from the past. Engage the present. And prepare a plan for our community's future. That is my platform. Thank you.
Thank you, and next is Ellen Edmund. Amanda, could you unmute her?
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Ellen Edmund. Thanks to all the organizations involved, especially the league and the library who brought us together tonight. Thanks to everyone watching or participating. You make us strong. I'm here to ask you to give me the chance to continue to serve the community we all love during this time of new challenges. With 25 years of business experience in medical management, including budgeting, personnel. Contracting and change management, plus my four-year council term, I'm ready to contribute from day one. Also, I've been council liaison for three commissions key to our response and recovery, Citizen Finance, the Park Board. And the Special Business District, which is downtown. I believe in an inclusive process, keeping an open mind until all stakeholders are heard and finding win-win solutions. I pledge my integrity and my hard work to Kirkwood every day. My priorities revised for the virus emergency are public safety. That's police fire all first responders and work with the county on public health. Streets, protect them from budget cuts and ensure the funding that gets us our grants. Emphasize safety for all. Support the recovery of local businesses, especially downtown small businesses. Build community downtown when it's safe. Using the new PAC with community gathering spaces both inside and out. Nurture our neighborhoods and our parks as vital to our health. Ensure that development respects residences and common areas. I hope to earn your trust to continue serving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maggie Dewey.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters at our Kirkwood Library for all you did and are doing to bring this event to everyone tonight. Campaigns have been defined as a job interview. This is my job interview to renew my contract as your representative on the Kirkwood City Council. Well, I'll give you just a little bit of what I've been up to in the last four plus years. I've been working with the neighbors on Anjanette, the neighbors behind Audi on Manchester. And with a neighbor on Washington to find relief from construction workers parking illegally. Working with neighbors and the park department to investigate some of the information in Quinet Cemetery. Working with the neighbors in your houses with hoarders. Standing up to what I consider overfill many times. Voting for and approving money to fix our streets and sidewalks many times. Always, always standing for the truth that everyone has the right to move about our city safely. Working with our former police chief, Jack Plummer, to find a good place for a homeless woman. Who lived on our streets for a while. Continuing to be part of the Smart America Consortium for Complete Streets. Kirkwood being one of three cities in the state of Missouri chosen to be part of this consortium. And being appointed by Mayor Griffin to serve as Chair of the Vision Zero Complete Streets Subcommittee of the City Council. Every bit of these and many more were my honor to work with and for you. Thank you to everyone who is with us tonight, and I am and have been extremely grateful for the technology that has allowed us to stay connected. And I miss seeing all of you. I miss the smiles and the handshakes when we finish. But as I sit at my kitchen table tonight, I can see all of you in my mind's eye. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bob Sears.
Thank you very much. I'm Bob Sears and. I was born in Kirkwood at St. Joseph's Hospital, which is now Aberdeen Heights, which is just a couple of blocks that way. I lived on. When I was born, we lived on Couch and Nurk, which is a block directly behind me. I grew up for most of my life in a house on this same street, two houses that way. And so I was in 1979 graduate of Kirkwood High School. I lived here all that time with some time that we, you know, lived in Jefferson City and down in the city of St. Louis. But most of the time it was right here in Kirkwood. I have two children, they're both here. People ask me from time to time, you know, why are you running? And sometimes usually that's with an eye roll or something, I don't know what that means. But I run because I believe I can do a really good job for the people of Kirkwood. I think experience and common sense and logic. Applied after a full understanding and application of the facts. And with all the community, public review and input that we can get. That is where I have the skills and the ability to do a good job for Kirkwood. I've shown that through eight years Kirkwood, on the Kirkwood City Council. And on the park board before that, serving as its president. I think experience will really matter a lot this time, more than at some other times. And that's because of the financial situation that the city finds itself in now with reduced sales tax reasons. Sales tax revenue for reasons that we're all familiar with. It's taken a hit. It's the biggest part of our budgeted income. Well, that is why I'm running and I look for your vote on this second. Thank you very much.
Next is Liz Gibbons.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Kirkwood Library for putting this together for us. And thank you to all my fellow candidates for your willingness to run. Kirkwood is a wonderful place to grow up, work, and live. I grew up here, going to Kirkwood schools and graduating from KHS. I was married here, have owned three different homes, one of them a starter home. Worked for a Kirkwood business for many years, Gwynn's Travel, raised my children here. And now my one grandchild and another one on the way are here. I want to make sure that Kirkwood remains a great place and work towards making it even better. If elected, I intend to make sure we have healthy streets, healthy development, and healthy citizens. But we have challenges, and in this unprecedented time of COVID-19, those challenges are greater than ever. The health and welfare of our Kirkwood citizens is and always will be my first concern. The National Association of Realtors recently reported that over the past three months. Clients are shifting in significant numbers away from urban areas to suburbs. Kirkwood will become more valuable than ever. A valuable community can be able to reflect that in their streets and sidewalks. That's not the case in Kirkwood. I will work to develop a plan to repair our streets and maintain them. In a desirable community like Kirkwood, there are ongoing developments. I will advocate for zoning protections for existing property owners and support infill, not overfill housing. And what about how much everybody's been walking and biking these days? Isn't it wonderful? Let's work towards making that the norm with streets and sidewalks, not only well-maintained but safe. My focus is healthy streets, healthy development, and healthy citizens. Most importantly, every issue that would be presented would be through the eyes of what's best for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Washington.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to spend a few minutes with everyone tonight. You know, all of us choose to live in Kirkwood, like Bob. I was born at St. Joseph Hospital and. Grew up in a little town, maybe to the east of us for a little while, graduated high school in 78. But have lived in Kirkwood for now over 30 years. I have two grown children, raised my kids here, they went through school. I've been very, very involved, I like to say deeply rooted in the Kirkwood community. Having served as President of Rotary, as Chamber, the Kirkwood School District Foundation, Greenshree Chair. Just very, very, very much involved. And one in particular committee that I have just thoroughly enjoyed. Is the Citizens Finance Committee that I've been on for the last nine years. So. Having served in that committee, I feel like I have a pretty good grasp and knowledge on the city budgets. The directors, the financial plans, the capital plans. And I look forward to serving in a public office, which is a new, this is a new route for me. I just retired from 40 years in banking. So this public service is very, very new. My platform is new leadership for a better Kirkwood, and I will strive to maintain our unique character. Promote thoughtful growth and development, stronger collaboration. And operate in a sound financial manner. You know, the results of our 2018 city cert, they noted that the streets continued to be our number one. Priority as a community. And while we've increased the work, I know as Liz mentioned, you know, I've. Taken many walks in the Kirkwood area over the last couple of months and have seen firsthand that we really have a great need for improvement. Kirkwood's charm, you know, we center our charm around our residential and business properties. The preservation of our unique homes and businesses and schools and churches is important to our heritage. And our architectural history. It identifies Kirkwood, that's really who we are. So thoughtful renovation and development of properties coupled with protection and maintenance of our diverse housing and businesses, properties is vital.
Thank you.
Stronger communication and collaboration to downtown are just a few things that I'm focused on for a better Kirkwood. Thank you.
Now we'll start with our questions, and Ellen Edmund will kick us off. And the question is, what are your goals for housing and development in the next five to 10 years? What are your goals for housing and development in the next five to 10 years?
Well, first of all, I would talk about downtown. Our downtown master plan does indicate that residents downtown will improve the business climate. It's foot traffic for businesses. A lot of us have seen businesses coming and going. And people who live in downtown do tend to use the businesses and they don't need to park. So it frees it up. This, of course, has to respect the identity of downtown and the charm that is so much a part of our attraction. In the neighborhoods, we have already instituted an ordinance for stormwater and we have a tree protection ordinance that was passed within the last four years. But the citizens do want revision of the zoning code building standards. Unfortunately, this was interrupted by the virus emergency. I was on the steering committee. We enacted various things like reduction in housing size. And increased setbacks.
And next is Maggie Dewey. You need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Sorry about that. I think this is a complicated question. I support what I call infill and I do not support overfill. Infill housing doesn't overwhelm the lot. Overfill housing is too big for the lot. Infill housing doesn't encroach on neighbors. Overfill housing encroaches on neighbors. Infill housing enhances neighborhoods and overfill detracts from neighborhoods. I have, I have a friend who has an infill house next to him. And they can no longer open the curtains in their bedroom because the window, if they do, they look out at this blank wall that is two stories high. Housing, we have got to get a hold on housing. Our, our, our older houses, our smaller houses, our starter houses are who we are. And we need to support those. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Sears, you're next.
Thank you. I support the development of residential living in around our core business area. For the reasons that Ellen stated, people now are looking for things that maybe weren't important to us 25 or 30 years ago. And what we were looking for in housing things. That they want to live in a place where they can just walk to their favorite restaurant. Or a shopping boutique store, wherever they want to go, but walk there. They also don't mind living in a more dense environment. That also helps with affordability to have housing around our downtown area. Having said that, the development of the downtown housing cannot be too big. It has to be in the scope of the surrounding area. I'm glad that their proposals, and I would support them to protect downtown from buildings that are too large. And also in our residential housing in the neighborhoods. They cannot be allowed to be too big for the lots and overwhelm them.
Thank you. Liz Gibbons, you're next.
Thank you. Like Bob, I agree, there's a lot of properties in downtown. Oh. Can you see me?
No. I see your photo.
I don't know what's happened. Host has asked you to start your video.
There you go.
Okay, sorry about that. Like Bob, I agree, there's a lot of property in downtown Kirkwood that needs development. I mean, we know banks don't need the space like they used to in the old days. And I'd like to see housing put in those areas. I just believe that it needs to be in keeping with the charm and character of Kirkwood. And I don't think we need to become a Clayton. So I hope that our zoning protections continue to go in the, in the direction of not allowing those kinds of things to happen. I also believe that in, that we need to protect existing property owners. Lot coverage is a big issue. I know that the committee was studying that. Garages were only counted at 50% and, you know, they covered the lot. So I don't know why that, that needs to change, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Washington, your turn.
I support and promote reasonable mixed-use developments that maintain our community character. Residential building, you know, that doesn't encroach upon our neighbors. And then enhance and maintain the charm of our residential areas. One of the big issues I hear about all the time is water runoff. So I think that's a huge issue that we have to address so that we're not impacting our neighbors with that. The other issue that, you know, we're the Green Tree City, so I really would like to see some sort of way that we can save mature, healthy trees. I know it's private property, but I think we need to continue to preserve our resources within our community. So I think we just have to be very thoughtful of our commercial and residential property developments to maintain our unique community. And I agree that, you know, the height restrictions, I think are an important thing, and we need to have zoning laws that protect the unique character of Kirkwood.
Thank you. Joe Fuch, you're next.
As far as housing's concerned, I think what we need to do is start looking outside the box. Yes, we can go ahead and have the homes that are being built now, the infill, the overfill. But we still need to look at young families, retired citizens who still want to stay in Kirkwood. We don't have that opportunity for them to purchase a home or a condo in Kirkwood they can afford. For an example, my next door neighbors who have lived in Kirkwood all their lives, they've lived in three different homes here in Kirkwood. They're retired, they want to, they want to downsize, and there's nothing in Kirkwood for them to. They can't afford it, or it's not on one level. So that's, that's, I think when you can improve things there. The other thing is commerce really drives our city, as Bob Sears said. The tax base is what drives our city, our city service. So my plan would be to try to involve more of our 28,000 Kirkwood residents and those outside of Kirkwood to.
Thank you. And now we begin with Maggie Dewey, and this question is about the streets and roads in Kirkwood. The 10-year roads plan is already antiquated. What is your plan? Who will you collaborate to accomplish it, and how do you pay for it? So what is, what is your plan for improving roads and streets? Who would you collaborate with, and how would you pay for it? And we begin with Maggie.
My plan is much to agree with what has been happening. We cannot, we couldn't, if we had suddenly $20 million, we couldn't use it in one summer because nobody would have any roads to ride on, to drive on. So this has to be done incrementally. And prioritizing is a very. It is very highly prioritized in the city of Kirkwood. Every survey has that on it, and it's always first. We pay for it. By money that we already have allocated to that every year. We may need to do a bond issue or something like that to do it. I support wholeheartedly continuing the plan we have followed for the last four years. The other part of it is, is that we don't just go in and fix the bad streets and not do anything with the streets that are already good. We do them both. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bob Sears.
Thank you very much. Streets are extremely important, and I have the experience with the streets that I think would reflect well on what people are asking for going forward. And that is, when I started on the council, we spent about a million dollars a year on streets, give or take. And that was seen as sufficient. There were a lot of ideas, a lot of complaints from residents though. And we tripled that in the time that I was on the council. So when I left, it was three times that amount. Still not enough, but I support every single one of those increases. And I will support them in the future as long as they're affordable. I do think we should propose to the voters, since the voters really say they, you know, it's a priority for them, which I agree with. See if they want to pay on a bond issue to really do an overall job. But we have, we have been in a plan that was created to, to maintain and replace streets that needed it. In a cyclical pattern around the city, and we've about made the rounds. So I support what's been going on. Will be going.
Next is, next is Liz Gibbons.
Thank you. When I announced my candidacy for Kirkwood City Council, there was a group there. And when I mentioned streets, everyone just started nodding, please do something about our streets. So it's, it's probably the biggest, the biggest concern out there with our citizens. And it's one of the things that government should be doing well, and I don't think we, we are. I'd really like to see a restricted street fund. That can, that's all that it can be used for is just the reconstructing and maintaining our streets. Maybe we need to go back to the days when they would go every quarter and chat up our streets and we'd all be upset about it, but our streets looked fabulous. So the restricted fund, street fund is what I really advocate for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Washington.
Thank you. Yes, streets continue to be a top priority, as everyone has said. And I know, having served on the Citizens Finance Committee and working with Bill Bensinger and understanding the budgets for the streets. You know, I think we have, as Bob said, we have increased the funding. We have done an excellent job looking for grants to help with a lot of our road development, curving and striping and signage and so forth. And definitely we need to continue to do that. You know, there is a certain point where we bridge capacity on how much we can do in a year. I don't think we're there yet. So I would like to explore other ways to finance, and if it is a bond issue. Or is it a development tax, some sort of other avenue to finance it. But I think we owe it to our citizens to escalate the renovation, maintaining, reconstruction of our roads at a much faster pace.
Thank you. Joe Fuch, you're next.
Yes, I believe that was the biggest concern that I've heard also when I was walking around neighborhoods and talking to people. Where streets and sidewalks, and it's difficult to walk on some of these sidewalks that you see. And also the streets with potholes and the stuff. However, my feeling is we need to have a three-year plan. And I don't see any other way to do it other than a bond. And I don't see any other way to do it other than a bond issue. If we're going to borrow money now. Now's the best time to do it. It's like, almost like leaves on. But to, to do that though, we need to be really thinking about our plan after the three to five years. We need to have a continuous maintenance program set up the place in place. To keep focused on our streets and sidewalks. That's what our community is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ellen Edmund.
I originally was going to advocate for a bond issue or a TDD to get faster, more visible progress on streets. And I think that that's still one of our best options for the near future after we assess the impact of. The, you know, the coronavirus emergency because our revenue stream for streets is a capital funding sales tax. So. I do think that we can move at a much faster pace than we have been, given the funding. We can hire. You know, outside people to work on contracting and project managers and kind of. Suffer all at once, like when they redid Highway forty in two years. It can be done. At this point with the uncertainty, my plan is to protect the streets from budget cuts and make sure that we have the funding. To ensure our, our grant shares because currently we do get anywhere between fifty to eighty percent of our street money from grants. And so, you know, within the past few years, that's like thirteen million dollars.
Thank you. Sorry. That's okay. You're good. Next we'll have a question about finance related to COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen will cost the city of Kirkwood a loss of sales tax revenue. How will you decide where cuts will need to be made and what cuts would you recommend? COVID nineteen will cost the city of Kirkwood a loss of sales revenue. How will you decide what cuts will need to be made and what cuts would you recommend to be considered? And we begin with Bob Sears.
Yes, this is another area and when I started out my opening remarks that I think. You know, just experience of being around the finance of the city. Is going to be really important on how to deal with this going forward. This is a big issue that's, that's concerned me for a while since I realized we were. You know, going to reduce our revenues. As far as, first of all, we have to maintain the basics. That's it. We've got to find a way to have fire and police protection, streets. Rib, street improvements and that sort of thing. As far as cuts. I think first we need to see where we end up, you know, down the, we need to be very careful and just. Not spend money on things that are not necessary to provide the services that we have to have. So we're going to continue to have police and fire. We're going to have, continue to have trash pickup and say, you know, sanitary and things like that. Where we would make cuts, that would be a budget discussion that we have to have after we know how much we have to cut.
Thank you. And next is Liz Gibbons.
I agree with Bob. I've been agreeing with you a lot tonight, Bob. That we need to see where we end up, but I'd like to see us work on a zero-based budget processing. And do that for the review as well, where we go, we take everything back to zero and then add it in. I think that will help us see where we are and what the possibilities are as far as if we need to make cuts and what those cuts might be. Thank you.
And next is Sandy Washington.
Yeah, certainly a tough time. You know, I think it's both, we have to look at cuts and then how are we going to continue to increase our sales tax revenue? Because that's really the lifeline of our, of our core operations. With regards to cuts, you know, it's just like your home budget, you know, what are you going to maybe not buy that new car or look at some capital expenditures? That we can postpone, just like we do at home. You know, we run the business of the government the same way. You know, I think obviously we don't know how big that breadbasket is going to be right now. I think it's going to take some very thoughtful considerations and discussions. And you know, we might have to postpone some things that we wanted to do as a priority. Back to streets, I think we still need to do that. We've got a performing arts center that, that is about ready to be finished. That hopefully will add to our coffers. So I just think right now we have to assess it, make a good plan and then stick to our budget.
Thank you. Next is Joe Fuge.
I'm all in favor of cutting, but what do you cut first? I would have to really, that's a good question. I'd really have to see the budget to see where, if there's any fat, if there's fat there at all to cut. And then we're, and I also agree with two, it's probably having, to have to have an increase in our sales tax base. In order to afford some of the things we already have now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ellen Edmund.
Thanks. Oh, I agree that at this point we need to, well, we've already instituted a hiring freeze and a lot of non-essential spending has been cut. Things that can be delayed are already postponed. And we have to obviously be able to cover our priorities. Nobody but the city does public safety. Police and fire and sanitation. So that's, you know, continuation of those services is key to our health. I also agree, as I had said earlier, about protecting the streets from budget cuts because of the need. And streets are so intimately connected with safety. I, I did already recommend and people agreed that we should not. Cut the striping on the streets, for example, because that is not that much in its safety. So. Evaluating things in those terms will leave us with. Money to protect the essentials, we hope. Constant monitoring, yes. I would even like to refrain from dipping into our fund reserves. Thanks.
Next is Maggie Dewey.
As a city, we are coping. We are of course continuing the essentials as everyone has said, fire, police, trash, streets. We have made some cuts already. Some departments have said we don't need whatever, a car or a new truck or whatever. This year we can wait. So some of those things have already been cut and put off. We've canceled car and guitars, the fireworks, the kids' summer camp. And there's still the pool and the ice rink and the community center itself under consideration. And of course there is green tree. Mostly the cuts have come and are coming because of the large numbers of people that came to these events and it's just not safe. But we do need to make these cuts and we are making them. More and more are being considered. With caution and with careful and very deep thought. And with the absolute, the bottom line intent of protecting our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. This time we begin with Liz Gibbons. How do you define diversity and why is it important to our community? What specifically would you do to protect the rights of all types of people in Kirkwood? How do you define diversity? Why is it important to our community? And what specifically would you do to protect the rights of all types of people in Kirkwood?
That was a long question. I, Kirkwood is changing and it continues to change and this is a big concern to me. I think part of it is housing. We need to have housing that will be, be able to be for all people of all different socioeconomic. Classifications and you know, for example, right now there's a proposal in front of the city to build a petro mart. Well, it's going to take down four residential properties. That are, right now house families that may not be able to afford anywhere else in Kirkwood. I think we need to look really strongly at making sure that our housing is diverse. Thank you.
And next is Sandy Washington.
Thank you very much. I agree with what Liz was saying. I think one of the, the ways that we can continue to be a very diverse community. Is to have affordable housing. You know, I think to invite new residents to, for citizens. That we have already that are looking to downsize for seniors. I define diversity very broadly. I mean, I think it's a lot of things. It's all of the, all the ages, race, ethnicity. I think it's, it's all of those and it's a very broad definition for me personally. But I think again, as Liz had said, you know, if you have an affordable housing community. It, it allows other folks to come in and people to, of all races and ages and, and EKO statuses to, to live in the community, which just makes us even stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joe Fuge.
That's a very good question. I love the question diversity. I believe that diversity in Kirkwood is somewhat lacking. And partly that reason is maybe housing, possibly affordable housing for young adults and also senior citizens. And really it's a question of, not a question, but we're, we're losing something where you don't have the other, all, all people. We, we should be, we should be a city of we, not me. And, and to find that, I think it starts with, with housing, affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Edmund.
Well, I define diversity also very broadly. You know, it encompasses age, socioeconomic. Ethnicity, interests and different abilities. So I think Kirkwood has changed and I feel we've moved toward more diversity. And we have a lot of younger people who do want their children to grow up in a diverse world because they know this is the way of the future. So they're looking for it in schools. One thing that I will say, the housing of course is very important. We have to get people, give them the opportunity to be here. This will require some increased density in one area or another. Because the price of land is very high here. That's supply and demand and we can't legislate that. On the steering committee for the zoning code rewrite, we did propose a new zoning code called Missing Middle. It's like a modified R five. This will give some opportunities and maybe some incentives for slightly denser housing. After that, I think that what we model is awfully important.
Thank you. Maggie Dewey, you're up next.
I, to define diversity, to honor and respect everyone, just because of who they are. It is important and it is vital because we are, are, are only as rich as the diversity as we are. And that's, that's something I, I live and breathe by. I was on the, the Kirkwood Human Rights Commission for five years. I'm the liaison to the Cuban, to the Human Rights Commission as well. It is of vital importance that we protect the rights of everyone, of all the groups and more that Ellen mentioned. Housing is part of it. Housing is a huge part of it. There must be housing for everyone in Kirkwood. For everyone that gets to go to our good school district. There must be housing. There must be. Opportunities for employment and for being part of Kirkwood.
Thank you. Bob Sears.
Yeah, thank you. This is a really interesting question because when, when I was on council, I proposed a, a statement. That I had hoped that the city would adopt and it defined diversity. And it talked about what we want to be as a community with that definition of diversity in mind. I was so thrilled that everyone on the council, including a couple of them on this phone call. Were right on board with it and helped us fashion the language to make it even better than the language that I proposed. That giant plaque now is attached to City Hall to the right of the door. I suggest. If you haven't seen it, go down there and read it. The point is to make everybody feel absolutely welcome in Kirkwood. Regardless of what difference there may be. Whether it's a physical ability, a sexual orientation, a, a race or a creed or a religion. We need to have all of our buildings filled with that love for all those people.
Thank you. This time we start with Sandy Washington and it's a question about a community center. Citizens indicated overwhelmingly five years ago that they wanted a new community center. Are you in favor of helping achieve this and how would you recommend it be paid for?
Well, I was saying, view of our current situation, you know, I think again, we have to go back and step back and look at priorities. We have the COVID revenue that we're going to be facing, our budget constraints. I, we have the performing arts center, we have the streets. So we have a lot of priorities. From a community center, I would support a community center. I, I think the citizens deserve. Updated facilities and programming. The way I would pay for it is, I am a big believer in collaborations. I think we can talk to other organizations within the city. Pull our forces together to provide a stronger programming, stronger facilities, stronger output for our citizens. That's how I would attempt to pay for it is through collaborations.
Thank you. Joe Fuge.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. I really feel, my personal opinion is that we should just hold back on. Any plans for new community center. We have a perfectly good community center right now. We're going to need three to five years to get through what we're going through right now. To be able to be financially stable again, take care of our streets and sidewalks and just maintain our, our city's government. That's how I feel about it. And perfectly honest with you, it's a great place right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Edmund.
A few years ago, right at the time I joined the council, the city council made an unanimous decision. To settle the performing arts center before we took up the community center. This, the performing arts center is being completed. We are almost finished. I think it's really important to reflect that this will offer various community gathering spaces that our old community center did not. And, and so that's going to be a very important aspect of it. As far as the community center itself, the time is approaching when we will be looking at renovating it. It still has two very good gems. I think financing, there may be potential for bonds if there's a National Recovery Act. There may, that is also a strong revenue stream, our quarter cent sales tax that goes to parks. I also agree with Sandy's idea about collaboration because many cities right now will be facing the same issues we are. So there are opportunities there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Maggie Dewey, your turn.
I do believe that we should renovate to the best of our ability, the community center. Years ago, when the whole issue started about PAC, performing arts center and the community center. The proposal was is that we would do both. I agree with Ellen that, that initially it was that we would finish the PAC. And then move to the community center. Right now we have very, everything's different as we know. Things are, things are limited due to COVID nineteen. I do make a pledge that this will happen. I think there are a lot of people that think it is not, that we've blown it off and we, and we are not going to do it. It will likely not happen to the degree it was first proposed. But there will, but there will be some money to get started as, as, and we will continue as we can from the quarter, quarter cent. From, that goes to the parks. And I agree with Sandy, finding outside collaboration is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Sears.
Yes, we need a community center and we need it to be a vibrant and welcoming place to go and visit. And right now it. When I was, when Art McDonald asked me to, to be on the committee to determine what suggestions we would make about how to. Whether I have a new community center or not, there were a lot of structural difficulties with that building, a lot of leaks and things like that. So we, if we have something, we have to maintain it. That's critical. And so I think the first step will be to take money that I think we have, will be available when the. Performing arts center is done, there may be some money that we can then take from that. And invest in making that building secure and safe and then go from there. It needs to be improved. The people want a good community center. But we were stricken with this situation. That's nobody's fault that we have economic, a, a critical economic situation. but we were stricken with this situation. That's nobody's fault, that we have economic, a, a critical economic situation. So we have to hold off and review what we can do and the extent to which we can do it with the community center when we find out what our revenues are going to be.
Thank you. Liz Gibbons.
Well, I'd like to see the community, the community center right now does some, some great things that aren't available anywhere else. The skating rink, the, the pool. Of course, also our tennis courts, which are maintained by the park department. All those things are things that aren't available anywhere else in Kirkwood. But like many have offered, I do want to see us partner with someone so that we can offer a facility that would be top, top rated and provide lots of exercise and opportunities for people, and make it a place where people want to gather, they feel a sense of community when they're there. Now, when all this can happen, again, like everyone has said, we have to see where we end up with the COVID-19 situation, and when we'll have the funds to do something about the community center.
Thank you. This time, we begin with Joe Fuge again. A nationally recognized firm recommended more density as a secret, as a secret to long-term financial vitality in downtown Kirkwood. What is your opinion of the study's conclusions and proposed projects?
Well, that's a great question, and I really have no, no opinion on it as of now. What I'd have to do is actually see what that is. So if some would like to send me that information to my email, I'd be more happy to answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Edmund.
Well, the council did vote unanimously to adopt parts of the master plan. That was the street grid of protecting some areas for commercial development and to, to ensure the a, a range of business to guarantee foot traffic. Actually, density isn't a secret. All planners talk about revenues following rooftops that if you have residences downtown, you will generate more business and strengthen the business climate downtown. My, where I would stand on this is that, yes, we do need some increased density. The plan actually recommends a mix of high amenity apartment buildings and what they call missing middle, which are buildings with smaller numbers of units, but they are still multifamily. Obviously, we don't have a lot of space downtown. We do have some properties that are up. Anything that is proposed has to meet our standards for maintaining the charm of Kirkwood and also respecting the boundaries with neighbors.
Next is Maggie Dewey.
Well, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure. A nationally recognized firm recommended more density as a secret to long-term financial vitality in the downtown area. What's your opinion of the study's conclusions and proposed projects?
I think the downtown area, it is divided into two phases. There's the phase one, which is the actual downtown core, and then the outer limits of, which is phase two. So those are two different things. The out, the downtown area, I think density is a great idea. I think that would help our economy with our shops and our restaurants and just increase walkability, increase people being downtown and just walking around. Phase two, which is north and south of the downtown central area, I think we have to be very careful of. And those are two very different areas, and I think they should be treated very differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bob Sears. You need to unmute.
Yep. It's not a secret, as Ellen said, it's something that we were not surprised to hear from any expert that it, more density surrounding or in the downtown area is beneficial to the businesses that are located there. It just provides a lot more foot traffic. Plus, it's the way people want to live now, as I've said before. People may not remember, or they may have come to town after this happened, but Kirkwood was faced decades ago with kind of a doldrum downtown. Things were not as active. And the leadership at that point just purposely created an environment of more density downtown. That's why you see now condominiums and apartment buildings that are located around a circle around downtown. And that worked. It brought the city from those doldrums. It nudged it forward. And so this is an important issue that will happen. We just have to do it carefully so that whatever new construction there is that provides the density is not out of character with the surroundings.
Thank you. Next is Liz Gibbons.
Well, I agree that we need to have properties developed in the surrounding downtown area. There's a lot of opportunities there. I don't agree with that they have to be five and six feet, six stories tall, especially when they abut some of our neighborhoods, some of our most iconic neighborhoods. So I'd like to see, you know, Kirkwood, stay Kirkwood, keep its charm, find that missing middle that Ellen's talked about, put in row houses, put in, they call them cottages, charming cottages, those kinds of the housing, I think would be very helpful for a number of the issues that we're talking about here. The business district, as well as providing additional types of housing for all types of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Washington.
Yeah, as well, I would promote reasonable mixed-use developments in the downtown area. I think the Plaza, Kirkwood Plaza Station area, how it's tastefully done fits our character and our charm. I think that's very, very important. Like, like everyone had said, you know, just the foot traffic to create and maintain a robust and vital downtown district is huge for Kirkwood. And the more we can have folks live there, walk there, you know, eat dinner there, it, it just makes it such a warm, wonderful place to live. So I absolutely support the density discussion in downtown Kirkwood proper. The one thing that I think we need to always be cognizant of is the traffic, and I know that's another topic, but the traffic that that would increase possibly on Washington Avenue and Kirkwood Road and some of the other streets, because I think that's a concern.
Thank you. This time, we begin with Ellen Edmund, and people want to have you talk about the Kirkwood Flats situation. So what is the Kirkwood Flats situation? Are you for or against it, and why?
Well, as a sitting councilperson, unfortunately, I am not allowed to comment on any specific proposals. This would actually possibly affect the city's autonomy to make decisions, because a developer can complain that the process was tainted if someone says already right up front that they are opposed to a project. So that's our legal advice, and I am bound ethically to do that. So I'm not sure what explaining about the flats really means. I have not seen their second proposal. It hasn't come before the council yet. I would have to just state that as the city council, we have a right to reject anything with site plan review. We can request any modifications we want and not accept if those modifications aren't made. You know, as I said, I do agree with increasing density and increasing some affordable housing downtown. Lower-priced affordable is a tough term, but obviously, since charm and heritage and our historic buildings are one of the main points, we would not want to interfere with that.
Thank you. Maggie Dewey.
Also, as a sitting council member, I have to agree with what and repeat what Ellen just said. And further, besides that, I have seen the updated proposal. I don't know what's, how it's going to look when it does finally get to council. So to give a preliminary opinion at this point, yes, would be something I shouldn't do. And also, I can't say how I would vote on it because I don't know what, what I would be voting on. I do, as I stated in the last, for the last question, I have, I do think that what we put into phase one, which is the downtown area, and what we put into the surrounding areas of phase two, I think should be two different things, for the most part, but not entirely. And I think I better stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Sears.
Yeah, okay, Kirkwood Flats is, you know, a mixed-use proposal that has a lot of units and has a certain height and dimension that a lot of citizens are complaining about if that were to pass. Like everybody else, I'm a little freer in what I suppose I could talk about, but I'm reluctant to do so because if I'm elected, I might be faced with the very problem they have, and I don't want to vote one way and then have a developer say that that's grounds to challenge the decision of the council. I will say, though, that whenever there is a proposal like this, I will insist on quality materials. That's one of the things the expert says, appropriate scale for the neighborhood, and no infringement on, or no detraction or infringement on neighboring neighborhoods. So you know, that's, that's what I can say. I will listen to everybody, the citizens as well.
Thank you. Liz Gibbons.
The proposal for Kirkwood Heights came in and actually really shocked me. The initial proposal was at 76.5 feet high, well over what the existing code was. The density, it was completely over the code for that. Density code would have allowed, I believe, 93 units. It was at 178 units. And then the developer came back and said they heard the neighbors and they were, know the concerns, and they changed it to 174 units on five stories. So I, I feel like there's still a lot, a lot of massaging of that project that needs to go on. As I mentioned earlier, that property needs to be redeveloped. It really kind of almost looks blighted right now. But we also, it abuts up to homes, and we cannot allow, like I said, we need to provide zoning protections for our current homeowners, and that would be one area that would need to be looked at.
Thank you. Sandy Washington.
Concur wholeheartedly that the project, the area, needs to be developed. I had, earlier this year, worked on a, a project while I was still working, and I think a lot of it boils down to the process. You know, the council, obviously, is going to look at all the plans. I don't know the plans myself. I've, you know, just heard the same things, that it's going to be extremely high and, and a lot of people living there, which I think is too much. Once I get the details, like, I would review them, determine what's reasonable, and make a decision. I think a lot of it boils down to the process. I know it's, it's developer, you sell the property to them, they could develop it within our zoning codes, you know, but I think involving the citizens, talking more to the citizens and, and getting their input, I found in developments in the banks that I've done, that that, that has been extremely helpful. I know there's a lot of developments, even across the street with Commerce in the works. So what goes on at the flats is going to set the stage for the other developments. So we'll need to be cautious.
Thank you. Joe Fuge.
Yes, I've heard the Kirkwood, Kirkwood Flats controversy quite a bit. My concern, well, my concern, what I'm thinking is, though, people own property. They sell property to developer. If it's within the cities, you know, cityscapes, yes, we have certain things we can say on how we want that building to be looked. Unfortunately, I think we kind of, kind of stuck our toe in the mud when we built our Performing Arts Center, and that's a pretty tall building. Now, granted, everybody says, well, we're going to look like Clayton pretty soon. Not, not necessarily. We'll, we'll never be like that. We can do things outside the box and make it look nice, and adhere to the neighbors. Progress happens. We're not the same city we were back in the 60s. We're going to have to move. We're going to have to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we start with Maggie Dewey, and this is about bike paths. The city has a 15-year bike walk master plan. We're in year five. Do you think it needs to be updated? And what would you lobby for to be included in such a plan?
I am a cyclist, so it's very dear to my heart. We are involved, we are getting involved with a, a proposal call or program called Vision Zero and Complete Streets, which would include, of course, bike paths and pedestrian paths, and getting everyone moving, everyone of, no matter whether they're driving, walking, riding, or any other, or differently abled, that everyone has a right to move through our city, through the city of Kirkwood safely. That is a goal. That will remain a goal. It is part of my heart. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Sears.
Yes, with the Bike Walk Master Plan, I, I think we, we tend to go into it and out of it at different points. Sometimes it's on the plate, and sometimes it's not. I think we need to focus more on it and, and look at it on a, and make sure that those, those things, those goals that we can achieve are achieved. There are some interesting things that I would like to see as components in it that will change things for people, and so they'll be controversial as well. But there are interesting things you can do with parking and lanes between the parking and the street, and, but it, but it requires changes that we haven't seen in Kirkwood before, but are all over in other places. I'd like to go and visit the, have, you know, people go and visit places, look at, at what other cities are doing, and bring those back, and make sure that we have safe bike lanes that, that, you know, have enough separation and enough separation to people who are walking also.
Thank you. Liz Gibbons.
I'd like to see the, with our redoing of all of our streets, that we look at that in terms of biking and walking. I'm always shocked when I, when I'm taking walks and all of a sudden the sidewalk just ends. It happens all over Kirkwood, and we're in the middle of somebody's front yard with no sidewalk. So when we're redoing streets and all of our sidewalks, let's look at what are the best ways to make this a walkable, bikeable community, and include that into our entire street program. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Washington.
110% supported, very much a walker. In fact, I mentioned earlier, with the COVID restrictions, I walk about four miles every day. I think I've walked every street, and I completely agree. You know, you were on a sidewalk and you end somewhere that needs to be extended. Absolutely, striping and, you know, any sort of walking ability or extending the, the grants trail, you know, having the ability for folks to get out. Anything that this COVID has done, it's really prompted all of us to come together as families, to be out, be active in our community, and that's maybe the one thing I'd like to see about the virus that continues. And we just have to make it safe and accessible for folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Fuge.
Yes, I, I, it's amazing how many people are walking and families and children and riding bikes and things. And yes, street to sidewalks, number one on everybody's list. You know, maybe there's some things we need to think about on streets and sidewalks. Bicycle, bicycle lanes, huge. Protected bicycle. What about one-way streets, maybe? That would help. So there's ideas out, but we need to do this slowly. You know, a three-year plan or a five-year plan. Yes, that sounds like a long time, but if we're going to do this right, it'll take time to do it right. Thank you.
And Ellen Edmund.
Well, I would definitely be in favor of updating our bike walk plan, especially as, as people return to work and we get a better picture of what the new normal of traffic is going new normal of traffic is going to be. I think people are loving being outside. Of course, it is the summer. I think we can also emphasize using streets that are a little bit wider, getting bikes past two downtown, having protected parking for bikes, you know, good places where you leave your bike and then walk around downtown. And this should all be actually coordinated with concepts of using our businesses downtown. This is an area we have not thought about before. We also really should consider developing bike connections to the train station because you can take your bike down to a nice place like Washington or Augusta and ride, and ride there. So, yes, and we have changed, the cities used to make the citizens responsible for sidewalks. Now the city is taking that responsibility.
Thank you, Ellen. And this will be our last question before we do our final statements. Considering the drug crisis, especially opioid, how will a marijuana facility contribute to a healthy community? How will a marijuana facility contribute to a healthy community? And we start with Bob Sears.
Well, assuming that when, when all of it gets online with the state and they start approving these facilities, they are a, a, they're being sold as medicine for people. These are not evil, horrible places that are peddling something that's unknown. These are places that are selling in medical, you know, our, our legislature has, and the, the people of Missouri have approved it. They put in guidelines. These places will be allowed. So I don't think we should, you know, there, there are elderly people who will be using it for their own health as prescribed by their doctor. I don't think we should chain them into going into some dark place in the corner of Kirkwood. But the state will and does have rules about where they can be next to schools, you know, that they can't be next to schools, that they can't be next to certain other things. And we need to respect that, too, and make sure that we're following guidelines.
Liz Gibbons.
Well, I suppose a facility like that would certainly add to our sales tax revenue. As they've seen in Illinois, they've done extremely well in adding to the tax base. I would be very concerned about where it was located. I know recently, I believe, a CBD dealer was on Manchester Road across from North Middle School. To me, that seems kind of, Maggie's nodding no, but so maybe I'm wrong. But I, I really think that we would need to pay attention to where that, where something like that would be allowed. But if the state allows it, if it becomes law, then I, I don't see that we can refuse any kind of business that wants to come into Kirkwood.
Sandy Washington.
I'm not as up to speed on this topic as Bob is. You know, I just, I guess from a personal standpoint, you know, if it is allowed and approved in the state, other states have. Liz said it is a source of revenue. I think you have to do everything within moderation and be thoughtful. And where it's placed is obviously very, very important. So, you know, it is kind of the way of the world these days. You know, it is medicinal purposes. CBD oil can be sold and merchandise of sorts sold. So from a professional standpoint, you know, I, I think we'd allow it. It would just, you know, we'd have to be thoughtful of where we would place it.
Thank you. Joe Fuge.
Yes, that's a great question. You know, it's, it's medically approved in Missouri now. The next step is legalization. And I agree with, I think it was Maggie that said that the tax base is the main, which the state of Illinois will tell you how, how the tax base is. And we do have areas that we could easily put these facilities. It's coming. We, we need to be proactive. We need to, 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 to have a plan of where we want to put these stores, how we're going to tax it, and how we're going to control it. It's coming. It's, it's like a wine store. It's going to be a weed store. So it's up to us as the leaders of the community to facilitate how we want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Edmund.
Hi, could you repeat the question, please? Or you could just clarify, please. This is about medical marijuana, right? Not CBD.
How will a marijuana facility contribute to a healthy community?
Okay, well, the only marijuana now that is legal is medical marijuana. It is by doctor prescription. And so I have to assume that that's what, that's what we're talking about, since that is what is legal in Missouri. We are not allowed by the state law to ban that since it, since it's passed by the state. So actually, we did pass an ordinance that has the most restrictive areas for sale of medical marijuana, even though it's a doctor prescription. We've chosen the farthest distance from schools and places of worship. And it's really restricted to only three areas of Kirkwood. Also, there are even more restrictions if it's an area where you are growing medical marijuana or processing it, and that is only in our light industrial area. So since it is a medical prescription, it's really not up to me as a layperson to comment on that as health. Obviously, that's been considered by doctors. But we do have the most restrictive areas for selling it. Thank you.
And Maggie Dewey.
First, Liz, I'm sorry. What I was shaking my head was, is that, that I agree with you. And that you were correct. There was going to be a, there was a proposal for a shop to be right across from Knifer, not Knifer, from North. That's what I was shaking my head at, when I first found that address, when I, because I always go out and look at what, wherever we're going to be voting on, because I'm very visual. And the closer I got to North, the more it just appalled I was. So, yes, it is the law. Yes, we have put the most restrictive boundaries around it that we can. And we will, and I will, I will support that we continue to, to enforce those boundaries. It is medical marijuana, and it does help patients. That's where it came from, long ago, when people picked plants and figured out that this was helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for us to prepare for closing statements. And I'll make a few remarks while our candidates prepare for their closing statements. I do ask each of you to speak about how you're, why you should be elected. People have seen that you have many common responses to several of the topics that we discussed this evening. And so what would make you the best candidate for City Council? We do encourage informed and active participation in government, influencing public policy through education and advocacy. We never support or oppose any political party or candidate as a League of Women Voters. The League is all volunteers. We're a not-for-profit organization to provide these services, including candidate forums, the Speakers Bureau, a call-in helpline, website for voters, the Voters' Guide for Election. This takes many, many hours of volunteer work and a sizable monetary outlay. We welcome contributions, all of which are tax deductible. You may contribute on our website, Your membership dues and contributions are tax deductible. We will do the closing statements in reverse order. So we will start with Sandy Washington. Each of you has two minutes. And then we go in reverse order, so Liz Gibbons would be after Sandy. So Sandy, are you ready?
I'm ready. Thank you.
You may begin your closing statement.
Thank you. As I said earlier, when you look around the tube, you know, there's six candidates for three city council positions. And I think that just shows how passionate all of us are about the city that we live in. Being deeply rooted in Kirkwood, born here, living here more than thirty years, raised my children, heavily involved. In fact, I, I worked downtown Kirkwood for ten years. As my kids were going through Tillman and Knifer and, and the high school, you know, you keep a watchful eye on them. But I've been very involved in the city, YMCA Board, Green Tree Festival Chair, Citizens Finance Committee, as I mentioned, for nine years. So heavily involved and knowledgeable with regards to the city operations and the budget and the directors. And, and I, I'll tell you, that's one of the most rewarding committees that I've ever served on. And you should all have confidence in how well-run our city is. And I just want to be a part of that. I want to continue to give back. I've been on Rotary, the Kirkwood City Foundation School Board, the Chamber. So I could just go on and on and on and bore you to death, but I won't. But I just want to give back to the city. I have retired after forty years in business. And being retired, it means something to do and want to continue to be a part of the community that I live in. I'm committed. And I want to provide new leadership for even better Kirkwood because we're already good. Focusing on maintaining our unique character, promoting thoughtful growth and development, like we talked about this evening. Really want to emphasize stronger collaboration among our, our citizens and our businesses and our organizations. And absolutely have to operate within a sound financial manner. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to, to thank everybody for listening tonight. Thank you to the Kirkwood Library, the League of Women Voters for organizing tonight's forum. And again, thank you, everyone, for spending time this evening for a better Kirkwood.
Thank you. Liz Gibbons.
Running for office is something that in a million years I never thought I would do. About a year and a half ago, I started following the rewrite of the Kirkwood building codes. What drew me in was that they were looking at changing the sixty-foot, including the roof, heights to seventy-five feet, not including the roofs. I was shocked. So I started attending the meetings. And I would try to listen. Sometimes it's hard. There's a big fan that blows in that room all the time. And the citizens sit back and we can't say anything. The, the committee always had papers, so we weren't always sure what was going on. But at one particular meeting, there were three developers there. And the three developers started asking, when are you going to relax the side yard setbacks so that we can build more? Again, I was shocked. Then along came Kirkwood Flats at seventy-six point five feet high. That is when I decided to start finding somebody to run for the open seat on City Council. I asked my friends. I asked my friends of friends. I asked kids of friends. I asked my treasurer, Bill Bonerito, who would make a fabulous compliment at some point. No one could do it. And I finally realized that if I want, I, it was time for me to stop worrying about all this and start doing something about it. I have a deep love for this community. Kirkwood is unique. Look, just look at all the generations of families that have called this home. I believe that healthy streets, healthy development, and healthy community will drive Kirkwood to thrive for generations to come. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to the Kirkwood Library. And I ask for your vote next Tuesday, June second. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Sears.
Liz, you couldn't ask me, and I would have done it. And I, and I would have been a good candidate to support those issues that you're talking about. I think, I think I would be good because I have shown with eight years on the council that I have the demeanor, the respect for city employees, the people that I work with, respect for the dignity of the people that come and speak before the council. I always take the citizens' view as kind of the starting point and the ending point of every decision I make. It is, our city is about the citizens. Businesses, it's important to establish a good business environment because businesses support what the citizens need. So everything revolves back to what the citizens do, and that's how I think about all the issues. And I think that's why I would be a good councilperson here now, and I've shown that I can do it. The, you know, my platform is what everybody is talking about, streets. We need to keep that going. We need to be certain about the zoning code. And then once we do have a good zoning code that's rational for our time, we need to, we need to hold people to it and not allow variances just because we need to have, you know, quality buildings that stay within our code. Everybody will know it. Count on it, and developers will know what's coming in. We have to deal with the economics surrounding the, you know, what we talked about COVID-19. And I think relationships I've made with all the department heads over that time and the other city employees. One thing that wasn't brought up is recycling. That's a big issue that you can look on my website and find out about. But we have to really, it's going to be a big challenge for us. Perhaps a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar loss to our, because of the cost of recycling now. So I thank you. I, I appreciate your consideration for election and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie Dewey.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and our Kirkwood Library. Well done. I began tonight with saying, this is a job interview. Please remember this about me. I have been planning and voting for safety on our streets and sidewalks for everyone. This is about data, facts, and figures. What are the problems? Where are the problems? And let's keep fixing them. It's about protecting and saving lives. Infill and overfill. Some older homes do need to come down. If it is a larger house that's going to be built, I will only support designing and building it so that it fits the lot and the neighborhood and does not encroach on either. I am in total favor of preserving and enjoying our downtown. It's a big part of who we are historically and financially. I will continue to look at how to move traffic in and out of downtown, how to also encourage pedestrians and cyclists and everyone of all abilities to move about safely. I support what we know as Kirkwood charm. During my kickoff celebration, I asked a group of residents what that meant. This is just a bit of what they said. Inviting, tree-lined streets, built to scale, planned, diverse, individual, community, and welcoming. I agree with all of those. Now, however, a few months later, I would also add vibrant. We are growing and changing in our now and for our future. While we stand firmly on the history of our iconic train station, our downtown shops and restaurants, our downtown square, and our neighborhoods, historically and vibrantly moving forward. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. If you haven't voted yet, please vote on Tuesday, January, or January, June second. And if you would please vote for me, I'd like to keep my job. I wish I could greet you later with a handshake. But for now, please stay safe and please stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Edmund.
We thank all of you, our hosts, for, again, for bringing us together tonight. Kirkwood's been my family home since sixty-five, and I chose it as the best place to raise my daughters as a single mom. I serve out of gratitude to this community for everything that the community has done for everyone in my family. That's my motivation. Second, about six years ago, a dozen or so homes, small homes, somewhat affordable in my neighborhood, were threatened by a development plan. We spoke out, and the city council listened. It was inspiring. That's the source of my interest in neighborhoods, and it was the source of my interest in running after I learned about how this government works. My voting record supports protecting neighborhoods. My voting record always supports public safety, streets, and our infrastructure. We have many strengths to face the challenges of today. We have a strong fiscal foundation, diversified businesses and revenue sources, and a truly excellent city staff and public safety officers. I've enjoyed good relationships working with all of them and learned so much through the generosity they've shown me. And we have you, an interested and informed citizenry. We'll continue to be vigilant in assessing changes through this virus emergency. We will keep our long-term goals in sight. And we will protect our priorities. That means we will do well. We will work for the changes we want and hold on to what is excellent today. Kirkwood downtown looks very different than when I came in nineteen sixty-five. And it really looks a lot better. We don't have unfinished buildings and the sidewalks are in better shape. We are taking care of the train station. And all of this will be a foundation. And all of this will be a foundation for change that respects who we are and what we value today. Thanks.
Joe Puch.
Yes, once again, I'd like to thank the Kirkwood Library and the League of Women Voters and all you wonderful folks that showed up tonight on YouTube to see your future council members in action. We all talked a lot about tonight about the challenges and opportunities we have in our city, but I just want to give you a little story about me. The Middle Lane Bogaljessang is an old family name that goes back to 1870 here in Kirkwood. When Melki or Bogaljessang, my great-great-grandfather bought 160 acres of ground on Manchester Road between Woodlawn and Lindenburg. They, they had a dairy farm there for many years and in 1930, they sold it to a St. Agnes home. So the other thing is about that property is if you drive by there, you'll see these huge magnificent trees. Charles Bogaljessang was the original Johnny Appleseed of Kirkwood. His two things he wanted to save when he sold the farm was number one, his trees he wanted to be saved. And he wanted it sold to a religious order. Both things were done. So my roots are here. My heart is here. My family's been here since 1870. So just a story about me. You've heard everything else and, and what, all I want to do is say, I'm a Kirkwood citizen. We'll house constituents in Kirkwood. I have one question for, how may I be of service to you? And an ending, I'd like to say, I'd like to end with this quote by Albert Einstein. He said, "No problem can be solved from the same level of consciousness that created it." No status quo. Vote Joe. 6-2, 2-0, 2-0. Thank you and good night.
Thank you everyone for an excellent forum. Please be sure to vote on June 2nd. That's your responsibility as a citizen and as a member of the League of Women Voters, we encourage you to get out and vote on June 2nd. Thank you and have a good evening.